What's all those shirts say?
I now call all of the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July 7th, 2015 at 6:30 roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Mr. Terapani is absent in excuse. Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seaver.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Bob Russell, a family of faith church. Will anyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we come to you this evening, we ask for guidance and patience for this council meeting. Give each city leader the wisdom and compassion to make the right decisions to grow our town. Father, I ask that you bless each and every one that works towards the accomplishments of Tarpon Springs, our police department, fire department, utility department, and all those who work for the city. As our city shows unity in its population, let this attitude spread towards this country, our state, and this county. Our nation has lowered our morals. Our nation has lowered our values. We have lowered our pride in our country. Today, so many are wanting to take and not enough to give. Bless those men and women around this planet who are ready to give their lives to protect the freedoms that we so take for granted, serving in our armed forces. God Almighty, we thank you for your grace and blessings, and we give you all our love. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now go to our public comments on items that will not be discussed this evening.
Y'all still there? Good evening. Gerald Goan, 1104 Clippers Way. First of all, thanks to the city manager and to the mayor for allowing me these units to talk with you about a very important topic. That is largely why I am here. That is our great-grown son Cameron. Cameron lives in Indiana on high ground, but he will be affected by climate change. So we had better get serious about climate change. As long as I'm alive, I will be. When spring arrived, as the sun arose each day, a songbird began serenading us. Now, I like to sleep in. So at first, I was a little, more than a little annoyed by the singing. Then, as I listened, the sound became quite beautiful, and I thought, what if, for whatever reason, I did not hear the bird sing? What if the bird did not exist? We know polar bears are disappearing, but I've never seen a polar bear in the wild, and besides, they are nasty vicious killers. So what do I care? This year, the Iditarod Dog Race has been moved 225 miles north there because there is no snow on the old route. But I'll never see an Iditarod Dog Race, and I don't even follow NASCAR or the Indy 500. And I was born and raised in Indiana. So what do I care? In Alaska any day now, the whole village of New Talk will begin sinking into the melting permafrost as if it were quicksand. Its Indian population displaced. The United States, and international law defines refugees as only those fleeing violence, war, persecution. Federal disaster applies only to personal suffering. No help for those people. Eighty-six percent of the Alaskan Indian villages are threatened by climate change. But I don't know any Yakup Ingetans, and we didn't really care much about displacing American Indians. So why should I care? But you say climate change is happening closer to home. There is no rain in California and hasn't been for some time. Some reservoirs are only at seven percent capacity. Well, I only have a cousin living out there, and I haven't seen her for 75-plus years. We really don't like those liberal Mexican Californians, so let them deal with the problem. I don't care. Or you say climate change is happening in Florida. At high tide, the streets are flooding in Miami where they have never flooded before. Well, as long as they don't increase my flood insurance, I don't care. Saltwater incursions are occurring in the wells of Fort Lauderdale. A recent Everglade study revealed plants and animals are in peril. The culprits, quote, "rising levels, rising sea levels, and invasive species, and humans." Jim Saddles, a botanist at the Everglades National Park, says, quote, "We kind of knew sea level was going on here, but now we see it's real and happening down here." Same thing in Times, March 7th, 2015. Carbon dioxide at daunting levels. March 2015 is the first month in modern record that the entire globe broke 400 parts per million reaching levels that have never been seen in 2 million years. National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. Focus the science on climate change is in. And at the risk of being seen as arrogant by one of our Florida presidential candidates, the facts are irrefutable. Climate change is real. It's happening. It's happening here, and you and I are causing most of it. You can claim to not be a scientist and deny reality, but that won't stop the advance of climate change. I'm not a doctor, but if my doctor tells me that I or Janet have a health issue, I'm going to listen and act. I'm not a masochist. I am not an auto mechanic, but if mine tells me I have a car that has a problem that could cause an accident, I'm going to listen and act. I'm not a fool. So when the nearly unanimous number of scientists tell us climate change is happening, we had better listen and act. Jeff, you have two sons. I've watched you father them. I know you care. Townsend, where he here, has a new daughter about the same age as our great-grandson. I know that he would care. Ray, you have a granddaughter, a new granddaughter. I know you care about the future that she will inherit. David, you have worked years devoted to the youngsters, preparing them for a better tomorrow. You must care. And David, you have two children. You surely care. Mark, I've seen you give your time to work for the youth of this community. I know you care. Let me compliment you as a commissioner. Your actions in the past demonstrate you care. Couple of years ago, you approved a city audit of all city facilities and equipment, with the results being steps were taken to conserve energy and save the taxpayer significant monies. It was a good first step, but more can be done. Some years ago, you adopted a tree ordinance. Tree huggers are not. You are pragmatist, and you care, but more can be done. You are building a reclaimed water system, probably 10 years late, but you're doing it because you care. More is being done. The RO plant is coming online, I think, right? Okay. Tarpon Springs will be a water independent, and how about us becoming energy independent? We did it with water. We can do it with energy. More can be done. Talk about your tourist attraction and marketing tool, Karen. What can be done? Well, there are some low-hanging fruits that you can start by adopting a resolution to states that you will be a green city. See those yellow shirts in the audience? Those are my friends from the Unitarian University Church here in Vaya City, Universalist Church. They are in the process of becoming a green sanctuary and all that entails. It may even be a windmill on the property. That's the first time you heard it and they heard it. I'm just kidding. But seriously, solar is in the picture as we restore the sanctuary. They are putting their investment and commitment where their mouths are. Will you follow their lead? You can direct all department heads to take another look at the facilities and programs and steps to conserve and recycle. Speaking of recycling, thanks for the curbside pickup. You have been way ahead of the front, out front on that service, but I see items that are put out for the trash that could be recycled. Educate and urge residents to do more and be specific. Both as individuals and as commissioners, you are powerful people, but you only if you use your power for the future. You must lobby your state and national representative for the resources to help this city, its businesses, and especially its residents install energy-saving systems. So I don't know all the ways to do more, but take the lead. Talk the talk and walk the walk. John Kendy said in his first inaugural address, "All this may not happen in the first 100 days, nor will it happen when we finish in the first 1,000 days or in the life of this administration, nor even in our lifetime on this planet." But let us begin. You have begun. Now let us aggressively continue, enhance, and celebrate our commitment for a safer, cleaner, and healthier Tarpon Springs, Tarpon Bay, and Tampa Bay and rural community. I will close with this seventh Unitarian Universal Principle. Respect for the interdependence and web of all existence, of which we all are apart. God willing and the gulf don't rise. When I was back in India, I'd said creek. I will return in three months or so and ask for your response. Let's not reneg on the promise of the future. Thank you for your attention. Janet is giving you a little reminder.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue. Thank you, Gerald, for bringing this forth, and he pointed out a number of things that are relevant to what many people feel that they have to deny, whether you call it climate change or global warming. I'm sure a lot of you paying attention to all the news about what's going on in Greece, but in the meantime, they're talking about Europe, and they're having record temperatures. Germany had 104 in some city, had never had that high before. Look at the intensity of all the storms. Right now, there's an El Nino, and there's a train of hurricanes all heading towards the Pacific. And as Gerald pointed out, how does all that affect us? Well, I don't know about you, but I'm sure there's a number of people here in town who live near or by you. And I've noticed over the last few years, the high tides are higher. The low tides are higher. We do have infrastructure that is vulnerable to this change. It may be out of our lifetime that we notice another inch or two, but it will keep progressing. So how do we, in a small community, try to do our part? Well, Gerald mentioned a few things. Energy efficiency. I hate to bring this up, but when Chris was running for commissioner, he told y'all two ways y'all could do things to help the residents of Tarpon. You could set up a solar bonding initiative so people could go and borrow money and get bonds and pay it off through their property assessments and put in solar panels. I spoke to Paul a couple of weeks ago about putting solar panels all across the top of the new water treatment plant. Any and every building we have, if we do renovations, solar panels need to be part of the picture. What else can we do? One thing that the EPA had just recently been denied by the Supreme Court, put like carbon taxes and stuff, and do you know something? I don't really have a problem with that because carbon taxes and trading, all that stuff, is just a way for speculators to make money off of pollution. One of the biggest ways to offset the CO2 oxygen exchange is trees. Basic biology, trees, plants, greenery suck up carbon dioxide and put out oxygen. And every parcel that you or other community leaders allow to be denuded of trees is additive to this problem. And I read the story about the place out on Keystone. They took out over 1,800 trees, and you're putting in 1,100 or something back as buffers. It's not enough. It's not enough. That is one of our main ways to do it. So as Gerald mentioned, there are things that we can do. We can speak out as a community and say, "We wish our regional, state, and national electors to recognize that and give us assistance to do some of the things that we would like to try to do in our part." But as Gerald mentioned, it can't be ignored forever because eventually, somebody will be drowning in it. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? If we have none, then we'll go to proclamations. This is Parks and Recreation Month. This proclamation reads, "Whereas City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas our parks and recreational programs are integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Tarpon Springs, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas park and recreation programs build healthy and active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also provide the mental and emotional health of all citizens, also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife, whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreational resources. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me, as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, hereby recognize the month of July 2015 as Park and Recreation Month, and where ass was stolen."
Thank you, Mayor Archie. Thank you, Board of Commissioners. I have to say that our city administration is heavily involved in our recreation department, and they are behind us 100%. This past year recently, we've installed a brand-new playground and swing at our splash park. If you've not been out there, if you have grandchildren, it's a new feature. The parent and child can swing together in one swing, facing each other. So it's a great apparatus. We've replaced the playground at Craig Park. We've replaced our playgrounds at North Anclot Nature Park and our Highland Nature Park just this year. So our city is directly behind us. They're supporting us 100%. We recently had our Fourth of July event where we had about 1,000 people come out to Craig Park for a free picnic. We got to show off our paddle boards because we have a brand-new paddleboard program that'll be held at Craig Park. And just the support of the community. And we had a concert last Thursday night, which we had about 800 people, which was a fantastic band. So if you haven't come out to our free concerts at Sunset Beach, it's another recreation event. And I have to say, they've been supportive, and they are looking to increase our recreation programs and the upkeep of our parks. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Then we'll go to presentation. Item number two is RO Facility Update. Robertson.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager, and I'm here tonight to provide a brief update on the alternative water supply project. I'm here tonight to share some really good news. Our goal was to reach substantial completion by June 30th, and we did it. Mr. Goan, we did it. The plant was the run, the plant during that test was run for 100 continuous hours, cycling through many different flow scenarios, including a sustained flow rate of 5 MGD of finished water production for several test cycles. City staff was present during the testing to witness and participate in running the plant, collecting data, analyzing samples. Wharton Smith and Tetra Tech, our design-build team, as well as city staff, did a fantastic job of working to meet this very important deadline. The very next day, July 1st, I was pleased to be able to forward a letter to the SWIFTMUD from the engineer of record certifying that the plant had passed the acceptance test. So good news there. So what's next? In my last update, I reported that we are waiting for FDOT to approve a permit to cross under alternate 19 with a transmission pipe. They did approve that permit, and the pipeline crossing was just recently completed. This means that the final four of our 15 production wells will be connected to the system most likely this month. Next, the extension of Allenar Industrial Boulevard, which is the roadway right in front of the RO plant, is approaching completion. About 99% of that pipeline work is complete, and 70% of the roadway work is complete. The pipe segments, the final pipe segments will be installed, flushed and disinfected this week to connect the RO plant to the city's water distribution network, and the roadway should be completed by the end of the month. At my last update, I mentioned that we were waiting for approval of a permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for construction of our final piece of subsurface piping at the Duke Energy Canal. Unfortunately, that status still remains unchanged. Last month, I also reported that we successfully tested the injection well using temporary piping. We were able last month to obtain a temporary authorization from DEP to use that temporary piping for, and that set up for our 100-hour acceptance test, which was very helpful. That temporary authorization is now expired, but DEP has granted us a new three-month authorization to use our existing temporary surface water discharge pipe for concentrate disposal under the terms of the existing permit. So that means we'll be able to use that while we're waiting for the Army Corps permission to install the permanent pipe on the shoreline there. And while we finalize the construction of the injection wellhead and the piping. And item nine on the consent agenda tonight addresses some of the final pipe and conduit installation needed for that final permanent connection. Obviously, we had to shuffle a lot of things around there with temporary and permanent piping and permitting authorizations to make all of this work. And although I'm certain I don't have a representative here tonight, I'd like to publicly acknowledge and thank the FDEP for working with the city and our consultants to make this testing and startup period a success. They were really great through the whole process. So now that we've reached substantial completion, we'll be working to reach final completion over the next six to eight weeks. This includes many tasks, including completing punch list items with the contractor at the facility, landscaping, staff training, connecting those final four wells, as I mentioned, testing and startup of our new backup power generator, completing the subsurface construction at the power plant after we get that Army Corps permit, preparing the final invoices for SWIFTMUD reimbursements, and obtaining final clearance from the FDEP to put the plant into operation to make water for our customers. I expect to receive that clearance in the next couple of weeks. Right now, we're targeting the last week of July to begin bringing water into our distribution system. And finally, introducing the new RO water into our distribution system is obviously a big milestone, and I want to take a minute to talk about our approach there. It's not always the case, but sometimes when you introduce a new water quality into an existing system, the chemistry of the new water can cause some temporary nuisance issues like color and sometimes odor. While the water will remain safe, these temporary, these temporary water quality issues can be mitigated using several strategies. We've been talking with our experts and other municipalities, drawing on the experience of others, and developing a plan. The plan will include a combination of finished water quality adjustments at the RO plant and system-wide and targeted pipe flushing, which will most likely occur during off-peak and low-demand hours or as needed. If water quality issues were to occur at any time, our team will be prepared to address them just as we are on any given day. I'd like to thank you for your time, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I really don't have any questions, but I want to thank you, Mr. Robertson, for all of your hard work and all of the staff's hard work in getting us to this point, and we're just going to hope that we don't have any water quality issues for you to resolve, even though we know that we have capable staff to do that.
We certainly do. Thank you.
Thank you for all of what you and others have put into this project so far, and we're definitely looking for its completion.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Do you have one?
I want to thank you also, both of you. These temporary issues from experience of other communities, you know how long they, you know, it could take to solve them or any idea?
It could be, it could vary. It really depends on the interface of the water. I would say that, you know, we're not doing a wholesale replacement of all of our water. We're still going to be making 20% of the water from our freshwater wells, so it's not going to be a grand change, but I would say roughly a week, maybe, maybe one to two weeks at worst, worst case, probably. We anticipate getting the system flushed out, you know, during one or two flushing events.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other public comments on this item? Thank you again. We now have our consent agenda. Any item anyone would like to pull or get more information about? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval second.
Any public comments on any item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next, we go to ordinance and resolution item number 10, ordinance 2015-14, amendments for alcohol license, second reading.
Ordinance 2015-14, an ordinance to the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending Appendix A Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article 4, Special Regulations, Section 52.00. Alcoholic beverages by providing for administrative review and issuance of conditional use permits, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in Land Development Code of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance, second reading of ordinance 2015-14 by title only, was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on May 29 and June 26, 2015.
Ms. Lemon, do you have any additional information?
Thank you. Karen Lemon's Economic Development Manager. No, there's been no changes to the ordinance since the first reading.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Lemon? Not chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Mayor?
Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue. Even though I agree with the intent of the ordinance to streamline the process, I know many people have felt why does alcohol things need to go to the planning and zoning, and then the city commission, and also a TRC? I didn't see the tape. I don't know which of y'all voted last time on the first reading. But I do feel there can be streamlined such that it doesn't have to go to P&amp;Z, it doesn't have to go to TRC. The staff can review the application for all of the requirements that are mentioned and send a recommendation to the board. But as the notes in the backup mention that the Planning and Zoning Board Chairman, whoever that may be now, I don't know, had said that it doesn't give residents or anybody who has an issue or an effect from this to speak out or any recourse. And they're not going to go appeal a decision through the Board of Adjustments for something that probably gets a 4-0 or 5-0 vote. So I just would say that it can be amended, but I still feel the final authority to allow a public hearing process be in place is to be with the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Most right. Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 11 is ordinance 2015-15, adoption of Florida Fire Prevention Code, fifth edition, second reading.
Ordinance 2015-15, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Section 7-12 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for adoption of the Florida Fire Prevention Code and providing for an effective date, second reading of ordinance 2015-15 by title only, was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on June 26, 2015.
And no changes from first reading.
All right, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval, second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 12 is Resolution 2015-26, final plat Mir's Town Center Phase Two.
Resolution 2015-26, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving the final subdivision plat, application number 15-45, for Mir's Town Center Phase Two, accepting all offers of dedication as described in said plat, authorizing the appropriate city officials to certify approval thereon and providing for an effective date. It's Resolution 2015-26 by title only.
Mr. Lemmon?
Thank you. This is a resolution to approve the final plat for the Mir's Town Center Phase Two. It's located at the southeast corner of Mir's and alternate 19. It's comprised of the current Windexy supermarket and the inline retail stores. It's a replat of the original town center. It includes a minor change by moving the southernmost property line, which will add some additional space for the next phase of the development, which includes market-rate apartments and also for future phases. This was reviewed and approved by the Technical Review Committee, and staff recommends approval of the final plat. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and also the applicant is here as well if you have any questions of him.
I really don't have any questions except for, is there any thought as to after this phase, what's the projection for the other phases of that project?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear everything you said.
Alice saying, where is he going after this gets approved tonight? What's the next step?
Oh, the next step, we're working on a site plan for a future phase, and the applicant is here. If you'd like to hear from him, they're talking about 237 market-rate apartments in the next phase, and then a future phase would include additional office and retail.
Is there any prospective timeline as far as for the other phases after this one?
The Phase Two, once we get through the site plan process, it also has to go to the county for approval, because it was a special area plan. So that's probably going to take three or four months. And then upon that, building permit can be issued and construction can begin. And then, of course, we're working through that, the local funding agreement, which any building occupancy, certificate of occupancy permit before is issued, the roadway would have to be constructed, the Mir's Boulevard.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
One real quick question, Ms. Lemmons. You mentioned that this item went before the TRC. It didn't go before the Planning and Zoning Board? This type of item doesn't go before P&amp;Z?
No.
Wonder why not? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment.
Thank you, Ken.
J.D. Althabach, Sicomo Engineering, 8370 West Helsborough Avenue, Suite 205, Tampa, Florida 33615. And just to answer the mayor's question, we, as we work closely with the staff in the last four months or so, led by the city manager, we have been working closely on Phase Three, which is a future apartment. And the staff working with us closely to modify the SAP, Special Area Plan, and working, of course, with the county on that. As far as the timeline, the developer is eager to work, you know, started the construction. And so the staff, the same way, they push and working closely with the county to get approval to the SAP, which we, you know, we're working back and forth with them. And we ready, really, he assures us already to go and work the construction plan completely. So we are, you know, as soon as allow us, of course, you know, through the system, to come back to you and get approval to the construction plan, we're ready to do that. So the timeline, they suppose that four months ago, they say it's September they break the ground. Of course, it's out of anybody's hand, nothing to do with that. It's, of course, move probably, hopefully, you know, to December. But they wanted to, started those apartment and that phase from the Special Area Plan as soon as possible. And I have with me, you know, the, of course, ultimate site plan or SAP, which is, of course, the city manager and all staff familiar with it, because they work with us closely on that. Hope I answer your question?
Yeah, well, thank you. It's one of really just trying to see this project continue on. It's been one that's, I know everybody's been anxious about it.
Correct.
In terms of it moving and construction of Mir's, you know, so as we continue to move.
Correct. And just to bring up to the attention, there's the partial four, which we deducted from the Mir's Phase Two, that piece, this here. We do it because we'll be part of future retail. We'll be part of the future retail, so we'll make it more appealing to have, let us say, this is here, if you see, we'll be, you know, we'll work more area, better area, I think, better area for retail. So that's one of the reasons for the plating. All right? Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval, second.
Any other public comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 13 is Resolution 2015-25, authorized sale of property located at 115 South Ring Avenue to the CRA.
Resolution 2015-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 115 South Ring Avenue to the Community Redevelopment Agency, the City of Tarpon Springs, and providing for an effective date. It's Resolution 2015-25 by title only.
Lemmon?
This is a city-owned parcel at 115 South Ring Avenue. It contains a 500-square-foot frame building and a 1,400-square-foot concrete block section. It's currently being used as storage for various public works items. The frame building was purchased by the city through a referendum in 1964 for $3,350. At some point, the block section was later added, and for several years, it housed the Public Works Department until it was used for storage about the mid-'90s. I've got a map at your desks that show the parcel that we're proposing to sell to the CRA. This is one of several city-owned properties that the city has targeted for redevelopment. The others are the fire and police station, the Forbes property, and the former nursing home. It's located within the CRA, a targeted redevelopment area. It's on the eastern fringe of the downtown, which is beginning to take hold, the opening of Silver King Brewery, Johnny's Filling Station Restaurant. We're also working on a proposal for a new green, zero-energy townhome project that would be located in the 100 block of South Ring Avenue. So in its current state, the property at 115 South Ring is not at its best and highest use, and it would be in the city's best interests and ability to promote the development, redevelopment, attract a new business by transferring the property into the CRA. This will allow us flexibility in terms of setting a sale price, arranging lease agreement, or offering any other incentives if we would so choose. This is the same procedure that we used with the fire station and with the Forbes property. And if you recall, with the fire station, we negotiated a lease agreement that allowed for some rent credits to help the LSE bring the building up to code. The transfer of the property or sale would be the first step in the property's redevelopment. We also completed a boundary survey of the property. We're waiting to receive an appraisal of it. It should be coming later this week or early next. And then a future sale would come back to the board or to the CRA for final approval. Finally, I guess in the larger picture, as we've been discussing the sale of this individual property, we've been also looking at the entire block. The city owns most of that property. With the nearby growth that I alluded to earlier, we're looking at proposing a construction of a municipal parking lot that would be located within that block area. We also would be establishing an alleyway that runs east and west on Gross Avenue, and those projects would likely be accomplished with the construction of Ring Avenue, which I believe is proposed, or the reconstruction of Ring Avenue improvements for next year. So with that, the transfer of the property would give us an opportunity to attract a new business, creating property tax revenues, bringing in new jobs, and helping to clean up that area of the downtown. With that, there's a memo that's in your packet that provides a little more detail about the need for the transfer to the CRA, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I want to ask a question. Thank you. I actually don't have a question. I just wanted to compliment, Ms. Lemmons and staff for being proactive in terms of trying to get some things happening in downtown area. I think when you look at 325 East Lemon Street, I think that's a success story, and hopefully the agenda item we're looking at right now could also be a success story in the near future. Thank you.
I'll go to Seb.
Thank you, Karen. I was curious about the procedure for selling or leasing that property and attracting new businesses as far as the CRA plan.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, or is it advertised to the community or outside of the community?
Yeah, within the CRA, the statute requires a public notice within the newspaper or general circulation. It gives an intent for the city to dispose of, to lease or sell, public property and invites proposals from the public.
Thank you. Great job.
That was the extent of your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval, second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Thank you. The next item we have is miscellaneous. Item number 14, license to encroach in the right-of-way of East Lime Street, mugs and jugs.
And she's doing a fine job filling in where we have the illness, and she has taken this on today in the last minute to prepare for these things, so.
Trying to get organized.
I want to thank Karen for stepping forward again when needed.
Thank you. This is a license to encroach, which will enable the owner of mugs and jugs to construct a handicap ramp and a grease trap on about 330 square feet of right-of-way on East Lime Street, which is adjacent to the building. The restaurant is at 40737 US Highway 19. They're not open yet. The encroachment is needed because the building is built to the property line, and the Florida Building Code requires that there be two handicapped entrances. So in addition to the primary entrance, they need a secondary entrance. The owner looked at placing that secondary entrance at the rear of the building, which would be the east side. But because of the length of the ramp that he has to build to meet the Florida Building Codes, the ramp would impede upon several utilities that are located there. So by constructing the second entrance at the Lime Street entrance, he has the room he needs and the space. There are no conflicts with any utilities or with the public sidewalk. This was reviewed and approved by the TRC, and we recommend approval of the license to allow for the handicap entrance and the grease trap and support the new restaurant.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? I'll just say just a comment, not just with this, but all of what's happening in that plaza really is kind of transforming that little corridor there, you know, so a lot of good things been happening there. Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, public comment? Still, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
My name is James Sims, Minister of Lake Tarpon Church of Christ across the street from Mugs and Jugs. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Police Chief, thank you very much for the job you do and the job that your men and women do, doing a great job. Am I to understand that this will be on the property of 40737? This handicap? Is it going to be on their property?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I was led to believe that it would be taking the easement of the property across the street, the church property. So this has nothing to affect?
Nothing to do with the church property.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, so I was misinformed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think the issue was, from Karen not hearing, the issue was where that right-of-way was. And obviously, you can't put a ramp or anything on the other side of the street for a wheelchair. All that's on their side of the street where it's going into, if that's what you're asking.
I understand that. That's why it didn't make sense to me, because I was told something else, and I had got this card in the mail, so I just wanted to make sure, that's all.
It's always good to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's all. Okay, also, since we're here and talking about this corner, there used to be, on the corner of Lime Street and US Highway 19 North, a right-turn-only sign. That sign is not there anymore, and it can cause some accidents shooting straight across that turn lane to make a U-turn. So just a point of information, maybe it's a right-
Where exactly was the sign?
Lime Street and US 19 North, facing west, there's a stop sign there, and then to get to that turn lane, people shoot across there in a white line to make a U-turn, and instead of going on the other side of the building and doing it properly, if you could, maybe get a sign back up there. Thank you very much. Y'all doing a great job. Thank you.
And thank you, and those type of things, we're glad to have you down here, but just call us and let us know, we definitely will replace that. We're glad it wasn't a long time. All right. So we have a motion, roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. This will conclude our agenda at 7:20, and we'll go to our CRA meeting. I now call order the community redevelopment- meeting. I now call order the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting of the City of Tarpin Springs on Tuesday, July seventh, uh, two thousand fifteen at seven-twenty-one. Roll call?
Chair Archie?
Here.
Vice Chair Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Tierpenny is absent and excused. Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Our first item is approval of minutes, March seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, CRA meeting. Can I get a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Chair Larson?
Yes.
Chair Archie?
Yes. Item number two is Resolution twenty-fifteen dash zero-six, authorize purchase of property at one-fifteen South Ring Avenue from City of Tarpin Springs.
Resolution twenty-fifteen dash zero-five, Resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpin Springs, agreeing to buy the property located at one-one-five South Ring Avenue from the City of Tarpin Springs and providing for an effective date. It's Resolution twenty-fifteen dash zero-five by title only.
I don't know if you have anything, the same thing that we just dealt with, so unless you have some comments?
Just that the Board of Commissioners just a few minutes ago approved the sale of this property, and so we're hoping that the CRA will approve the purchase of the property.
Well, we hope that this body will concur. Shall we entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Chair Larson?
Yes.
Chair Archie?
Yes, and this will conclude our CRA meeting, and we'll adjourn it at, I guess, seven-twenty-three. Um, we'll go to staff comments. Chief?
No comments, Mayor.
Attorney?
No comments.
City manager?
Um, first of all, just as a reminder, from the budget schedule, as the times come, the, the, um, first session with the commission to discuss the budget is set for Tuesday, um, July twenty-eighth, and I just wanted to make sure to you, because as you see, we had several, we had like three dates in there. We have one, second one if needed, third one if needed. I just wanted to remind, this is the original first date on the budget schedule. We're a little bit ahead of schedule because we've done some budget things as we've gone along, so, so this session, as far as the introduction, with the new way we've done budget and the updates and stuff, will be a little shorter. But, again, I just wanted to make sure that that date was, was still good, and we didn't have any issues with it, because Irene will put it on the calendar tomorrow, and we'll start doing it. So, if that date's still good with everybody, that's the original date, so.
Well, if you feel good right now.
Okay. Um, the other thing I wanted to discuss that relates to what we did tonight, just in several travels tonight, I mean, when you're, when you're driving around town, and especially when you go up the corridors, going up nineteen, you know, you see the firm and Chevrolet and the brand-new building that's there, and it's in the city. You see Flammer Ford trying to keep up with them and building a brand-new building. Looking across the street at a Big Lowe's sign that they put up for the Lowe's finally coming. Going to Circle K where it's hard to get your drink with crushed ice, which you kind of told them on the side that they needed to have, they were coming in there. But if anybody's seen that with their new pumps and their new store, the place is booming from day to night and vibrant, whereas the other one wasn't that way. And then, as you go down to the corridor into the CRA area and some of the things we've talked about, I just want to give some credit to a lot of past commissions, because this whole idea, a lot of the ideas we have, whether it's the Echo Village going up on Ring, which is all part of the walkable community types concepts that we were talking maybe ten, twelve years ago, about, about those type of things on the trail, on the walking distance, and obviously, the energy efficiency to be added on it from there. When you see that going up, when you see what is going on at Ring, this, the importance of this property here, and why we kind of changed course and said, um, you know, we need to not only look at something going here in the building that we have, which was an old public works building when I was at the Police Department on Lemon Street, um, that whole extension of downtown is starting to go, and that's all back from the ideas of Lemon Street and what was going on with the upgrading of Lemon Street and extending the downtown district and that sort of thing. As we've seen with the Johnny's Filling Station going in, there may be some things on those buildings going between Tarpin Avenue and Ring if the, if the old police station, that business gets going, um, and with some prospective businesses that are buying some of those houses to make type of restaurants, type of things along there, all of a sudden, we're going to have an extended downtown that'll help the whole thing. And that's where we got into the idea of not only doing this, but that area where the old Public Works, that we're going to need some parking down that way, because if that booms like the envisionment of Lemon Street, and again, this is commissions back ten and twelve years ago, and, you know, we had that little bump with about five years of bad economy that stopped this. But, again, it was a lot of visions from a lot of commissions through you all and you keeping it going. So, we have a lot of people and citizens involved with us in the walkable communities, and we're seeing this second downtown going as we're going into CRA and the importance of it. And hopefully, that makes a more vibrant, complete downtown, and, like I say, that's why if we get this business in, the business going there, a couple of those houses on Tarpin Avenue become businesses, we're going to definitely need some more municipal parking down there to accommodate that second downtown. So, again, I just want to thank all past board members, past citizens who talked and worked on these things, because it's, it's a long time coming, but we're really starting to see something going on there, and, and that's the importance of those items tonight, so just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Mr. Banther?
Sir, um, uh, uh, Mark, do you know when the new website, was there a timeline for that? I know it's in the works, and a lot of it was the Merchant Services side. Is there a timeline for that being launched?
Um, we're close. We're sometime between October, I mean, between August and October. It's, 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 it's coming to the last phase and stuff, so that is one part. There are some other things with some of the technological issues that we're having a little, but that part of it's coming up, so we're looking at the latest, I think, October one, and probably even sooner, breaking out parts of it and stuff.
And maybe find some way in the water bill or something just to advertise it, because it's not just a website, it's a whole way citizens can pay their water bill, get information. And also now, just to say, on the record, obviously, the live streaming is working great for our, for our, 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 all of our meetings. Somehow, could they, at least on the old site for now, put that on the homepage? I know it links right to the agenda page, but it's put that you can watch the city commission meetings live online somehow, so people that go to the website know that, because that's the only way I think you can watch it live, because I believe the, uh, television ones, you know, delayed a few days.
I'm waiting for my first person to rush from home after watching and get down here in time for an item that's on the agenda, because they saw it on the live stream.
Oh, well, I think it'll happen. I, you know, I'm glad we did it, and I, I think we're able to do it in a way that didn't cost as much money as you thought it would, right, with the county, because we get to use some of these free internet type things. So, that's great. Thank you very much.
Vice Smith?
Thank you. I've got a couple of comments I wanted to make. First of all, I should have said this earlier while Craig was still in the audience, but I wanted to congratulate Craig and Ashley and the entire Recreation Division for the great work that they did on the July fourth picnic. There was a lot of, a lot of families having a lot of fun with different activities, including the paddle boarding, and there was a train driving around. Kids were on a little train thing, and there was a water slide. Just, just a lot of fun activities, and that's a good event every year. I'd also like to thank Waste Management for continuing to be our partner with that event. It's just a good event each year. Also, tonight, agenda items twelve and fourteen were two items that I was surprised that they did not go to planning and zoning before they came to us. And, and maybe that's fine, but it, it just kind of got me curious, and I'm wondering if I could get maybe a memo or an email explaining exactly what the criteria is, and by now, maybe I should know, but I don't, exactly what the criteria is for which items go to planning and zoning and which items don't. Agenda item number twelve, a final plat for Mears Town Center, that, that just seems like a planning and zoning type agenda item to me, so I'd be curious to get that. Also, I wanted to thank...
What was the other one?
Uh, twelve and fourteen were two that I just thought. Fourteen was the license to encroach into the right-of-way East Lime Street. That also seems like a planning and zoning type issue, but maybe I'm interpreting it wrong. Also, I wanted to thank Mr. Goen for speaking this evening regarding alternative energy and solar and climate change and so forth, and I'm wondering if we could get an update, because I know we had been looking into partnering with the county on some solar issues in terms of the ability for residents to have as part of their property bill financing solar panels, high-efficiency air conditioners, different things of that nature. And I'm wondering if we've had any progress with that, because I know we were talking about partnering with the county. Also, I know we've got some buildings with solar panels on the rooftop, and I, I'd be curious to get an update on how that's working out and whether or not it would be useful and advantageous for us to continue to implement solar panels on other buildings that we own throughout the city. Thank you.
Yeah, now, we can do that. Paul Smith has been working with the county as they're going through their processes, and we'd be glad to get him to the next meeting or meeting out, get that and tell you the update of those processes and, and what's going on with moving towards that direction. But Paul Smith has been active with that all along, so we can get you an update from him.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Seber?
I also want to thank Mr. Goen, and I agree, Jeff, you know, I'd like to see us move forward with that. I'd like to bring something up that we don't really have to discuss tonight, but since we're talking about budgeting and marketing, I'd like us to look at the feasibility of doing a comprehensive marketing study. Last year, we were able to budget some, some money for marketing and to give Karen some more tools, and I know the Merchants Association and the Chamber and the city partnered on, on some marketing, but I just wondered if those marketing tools were successful, and, and how do we know if they were successful? Karen has done a fantastic job with growth and development and new businesses, and I congratulate her. Unfortunately, we also have businesses that are leaving Tarpin Springs, and I've observed some closing this summer on the docks. Our businesses spend a lot of money here, and I just wonder what we're doing or if we're doing anything to look at retaining any of those businesses. Obviously, the summer months are slower, and, and we expect to have less business here, but I know that our beaches are thriving in the summer, and some of our beach communities are thriving year-long. So, what do we need to do to get, you know, people here from, from the beaches? And I recently had family visiting and took them to Howard Park, and I had actually not gone to Howard Park and sat on the beach, and, and I'd gone and walked and do, walked the causeway, but I hadn't gone and sat on the beach, and we went a couple of days, and I was just amazed that I found like the last parking space, and it was great. I was just really happy. I thought, I'm surely going to run into somebody I know here. I didn't run into anybody I knew. So, what I wondered was, where were these people coming from? Are they coming from New Port Ritchie? Are they coming from North Tampa? Are they from Tarpin Springs? When they come here, are they visiting our stores, eating in our restaurants? And how do we answer those questions? I know Dunedin recently spent some money on a comprehensive study, and they appear to be changing their branding, maybe looking more at promoting a honeymoon island. Do we need to look at rebranding ourselves? But the only way to really get these answers, I feel, is to do a comprehensive study, and I'd like to see if Karen can maybe look into what other communities have done, what is our best way of doing a comprehensive study, if Clearwater St. Pete Visitor Bureau can help us with some of these answers, or the League of Cities. But in any case, I feel that we need to know whether we're spending our marketing dollars wisely, and to do that, we probably need to find out the answers to some of these questions. So, in the next couple of weeks, maybe, or next couple of commission meetings, I thought maybe we could bring this up as a discussion or look at, you know, maybe budgeting something for, for this purpose next year.
Well, just as a thought, and that brings up the case, you know, we've been doing some things budget-wise different. I'm foreseeing the twenty-eighth be in a meeting where, again, we've been kept along the way, and obviously, it's your show on that day, but I don't see us going, but you've seen these budgets, and they're probably familiar and look alike. You may have some questions, but these are some of the things that if you could get me in advance to talk about, this is the case, obviously, this is one of the places where it's really a meeting for the department is to be there and the commission to exchange these things. This, along with some other ones, would be some good items to sit there. For instance, in Karen and the economic development, that budget would not be in there. By giving me this ahead of time, she can look, give you some ideas, come and tell you what the probable cost is, and probably appropriate time for these, and I know we're going to have an item next week. It's not a major amount of money, but we're going to talk about another item in two weeks that's going to need some budgeting. But if anybody else has some of these things also, I think it'd be a good, you know, use of the time and budget, because I really don't think there's going to be a lot going through. You've seen the budgets, there's not that much difference to do and stuff, but this is a time where we can talk while we're talking about if there's anything to subtract, which, you know, has always been a challenge. You've seen and tried to do it, and there's not much to subtract, but also talk about some of these things, and do we want to commit and commit extra funds to get to that final budget and do that? So, we'd be glad to bring it in a meeting and stuff, but some of these things, as we get to the budget in departments, this would be a case where now we've got a few weeks to tell you what that would be, and it would be X cost for the, for the budget, if you wanted to add it in, in the economic development, do that, so.
I know that Dunedin spent quite a bit of money, but I'm just curious to see what other communities have spent. What are they doing to, to market, you know, their, their beaches or towns, and how much could something like that cost, and whether we can afford it or not?
So, she'll be working to have something to, so we can discuss that issue either at a meeting or at the budget time, at the budget meeting, we can discuss that.
Uh, thank you for that. We definitely, uh, need to do something. It just reminded me and, um, Karen might remember and Mark, when we had a meeting with the congressman to talk about some, uh, marketing things. I'm not sure what, what happened to that eventually, you know, but if we could kind of bring that back, to see where we was at with that, if that's a viable option. But I do think that, um, I wanted to thank, Mark said, uh, the commission, and it's been the commission, but also, it's been staff and former staff, and especially Karen for a lot of the development that's happening now. And, but Commissioner Seber talked about something that is going to be as important as, as attracting this retention, you know, and whatever we can do for as bringing people in helps the bottom line and people staying with us, you know, so, uh, and hopefully, that will continue to grow, and some of the vacant policies that we have around, and buildings will, uh, be filled. So, I, I forgot, and you probably remember, or you look at the notes to see, uh, what the group name was that we had talked with, you know, like I said, we...
The group that we met with?
Yeah.
It was called Brand USA.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was a national, it was set up through the federal government through, after nine eleven to promote tourism. And they had several different packages of things that we could do. Some of them were, because we're so heavily Greek, that we could promote our town to other international communities. They had a, a program where you could market yourself to South Americans to, we would, what we would do is we would take advantage of what the Tampa Airport is doing and target Latin America and target the expansion that they're doing with their Germany, Switzerland, where they're targeting their, their airline flights. They would do videos for us, and it would be in different languages. We do get a lot of tourists from outside of the United States that come here, because we are such a Greek-influenced community. So, and they had a couple of other things that we could do for their website. So, we'll, we'll follow up with that. I think that the cost of the, I know the one video, I think, was about eight thousand dollars, but it's something that could be used, you know, over and over again.
Okay, yeah, I mean...
So, we can, I can look back on that and...
Look at it and see if it's going to be economically feasible, but, uh, Commissioner Seber is, is correct, and if we, you know, I, I'm not sure how much that would cost, as was what Dunedin did, but, um, we also can always borrow from our neighbors. I mean, what's good for them is good for us, too, to a certain extent, but even though we are somewhat unique, so. But I'll think about what you talked about, and all of us should is that there are some items that we can, um, prepare the city manager will to bring forward that we can look at during the budget time, you know, so. But, uh, thank you for your hard work and filling in and doing all the things that you do, you know. I might put another super on Superwoman.
It's all economic-related, so it's all good. Thank you.
But, um, the city manager talked about something... But the city manager talked about something that I'm hoping don't happen, is while we're streaming, somebody is at the house and run down here because they want to get on, and I hope that they look and say, hey, they're doing a pretty good job, we don't need to go down there, you know? Oh, that's what they're here for. Well, I don't want to say this meeting adjourned, but we will adjourn the meeting at 7:39.